Like may last, not have anymore.
Four thirty.
Okay, good morning. I'll call the, I'll call the order, the November second, twenty twenty meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be, can you hear me? No? Can you hear me?
Nope, nope.
No? Can you hear me? Is it better?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call the board to, to order the meeting, the November sixth, second, twenty twenty regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and then after that, I'll ask our chaplain, Reverend Josh Frazier, to come forward for the invocation. So if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
...........................................................................
Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for the cooler weather, and we thank you for all that it brings, the changing of seasons, the changing of things here in our county, Lord. And we just pray, Lord, that you would give us guidance and wisdom in all that we do, in all decisions that we make. I thank you for these men who are willing to utilize their time in a way that would help benefit our county. And we pray again that you would give guidance and wisdom in all that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, thank you Pastor Josh. Okay, our next order of business is public hearings, and we have, we have a public hearing for the approval of the twenty twenty schedule values, and we have our tax assessor Judy Hickman and her, from Tanner Evaluation, President Jimmy Tanner, to talk about that this morning. Welcome Judy.
Good morning. During the October nineteenth meeting, the schedule of values were presented to the commissioners, and a public hearing was requested for today's meeting. There was copies placed of the, the schedule of values had copies placed in the county manager's office, in the assessor's office, and they were also placed on the Haywood County website. A legal ad was published as well, and the Mountaineer notifying citizens of the locations of the schedules and the date and time for the public hearing. North Carolina General Statute one oh five two eighty-six requires a uniform schedule of values, standards and rules to be used in the appraisal of real property at its true value and its present use value. The schedule of values were written by Jimmy Tanner and Ron McCarthy of Tanner Evaluation Specialist, I'm sorry, Tanner Evaluation Services. Just to give you a little bit of background on Jimmy Tanner, he has been in the tax world for the past thirty years. He was recently the tax administrator at Gaston County for the past eight years. And Ron McCarthy has been doing this for about fifty years. So if we have any questions regarding the schedule values, we do have Jimmy here with Tanner Evaluation.
Thank you. Did you want, did he want to make a comment, Jimmy? Did you want to make a comment, Jimmy?
.............................. Yeah, you know, the public hearing, it's part of this process, what it is, is for the public to have an opportunity to give any comments they have about the schedule of values. You know, the schedule of values is kind of a complicated piece of machinery because it's got everything that could possibly be, you know, done in the reappraisal. It's not a specific pricing on a specific house. It's just all the tools that allow us to build them values. And, you know, generally, there's no issues with the schedules, but, you know, this is part of that process going through the, you know, it's about a two-month process from the start to finish, and this is just one of the steps to get, you know, allows the public to have a comment if they want to.
Okay, alright.
Hey Jimmy, were, were there any substantial changes to the schedule of values from four, from four years ago?
No, we, we simplified some things. There was some coding, just simple things. There was coatings that was basically the same thing. We merged them together to clean them up better. But as far as the schedules, there's not a lot of difference in the schedules. We just cleaned them up a little bit, things that was kind of repetitive and things like that we went through. And, and, you know, instead of having four hundred codes, you know, we got lesser codes, but it didn't change the structure any at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I need to open up for public hearing for the schedule values. We do have a public comment session after this, so, but would anyone like to speak as to the schedule values? Morning? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing for the schedule values. So we'll be voting on that in our next meeting. Correct, Tracy?
Yeah, Kevin, let me mention one thing. There was a little bit of confusion in the neighborhood or in the community, around the county. Some people thought we were gonna, this was gonna be the reevaluation. But there's a difference between the schedule of values and the reevaluation.
Yeah, I think in the, in the article, it basically maybe said that, that the evaluations would be kind of delivered today. And, you know, I thought the article was really good, but that was a little misleading. This is just one of the steps in the reappraisal. The evaluations, as far as the individuals receiving the evaluation, will not be until they actually get their notice in the mail. And, and not only will they get that notice, included in that notice will be all the information, you know, to do if they, they feel like that value is either unfair, being more than it should be or less than it should be. But, you know, it'll, it'll have all the information in there as far as the taxpayer needs to know about what they need if they think the value is not fair. And we've, we've, we've implemented the electronic appeal to make it even easier for the taxpayers if they feel like they need to appeal to value. So, but all that, all that information's gonna be included in that valuation notice when they get that. It'll probably be around the February, March timeframe, something there.
Okay, so we'll vote on the schedule values at our next meeting, okay? Okay, our next order of business is our public comment session, and I have three, three people so far that have signed up to speak. If you would, make sure you're speaking to the mic. We do have hand sanitizer and wipes if you'd like to wipe off the microphone at the podium. If you would, make, like I said, make sure you're speaking to the mic, and you're allowed for three minutes. Tracy will let you know when your three minutes is up, and then if you would, you know, I usually don't do a hard and fast cutoff, but if you would, just finish your thought at that point, and we'll move on to the next person that signed up to speak. So our first person to sign up to speak is Deanne Wilmot. Welcome, Ms. Wilmot.
Thank you. My name is Deanne Wilmot. I live at two four three Walnut Ford Road, Waynesville, Flora, Waynesville, North Carolina. And I'm here to speak about the fairgrounds problem, the noise problem. Last Tuesday evening, at the very beginning of the concert, the announcer, who we hear every decibel and everything he says for the entire concert, and we're a half a mile away, announced that this will be our last concert for a little while, but we'll be back in full force in March. Well, that was devastating news for all of us, for sure. And it's just, it, it makes us feel absolutely terrible about what's happening with our community. As early as nineteen forty-nine, the Supreme Court recognized Kovak versus Cooper with the duty of local governments to regulate and enforce laws protecting individuals from the invasion of amplified music. With the addition of loud speakers, his music could be more readily cross over property lines. In this ruling, the court stated, in his home or on the street, he is practically helpless to escape this interference with his privacy by loud speakers, except through protection of the municipality. That is you. We need you to step up, and we need you to protect your constituents. Sound is not linear. It works like an earthquake. It increases in its intensity as it gets higher. The Smoky Mountain Events Center manager said he measured sixty-five to seventy-one decibels in our neighborhood the last time, and I have measured sixty-six to eighty-three. But using his intensity, the intensity of sound at seventy-one decibels is four times the intensity of sound at sixty-five decibels. As sound density, it doubles every three decibels. That's why it matters so much how many decimals you can hear at any given place. Obviously, this does not equate with enjoyment of my home and the health of my family. You asked for possible solutions. How about if you hired a sound engineer to assess this problem and come up with viable changes? How about researching what other communities and counties such as ours in North Carolina are doing about this problem? How about designating somebody on your staff to look into possible changes in the present noise ordinance, which has no decibel readings in it? Please, we, we just need you to know you hear our concerns. We appreciate those of you have responded back to us. But you're responsible for, to your constituents, and I hope that you care what happens to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilmot. Okay, and I was mistaken. I have four people sign up to speak. So our next speaker will be Eric Overholz. Welcome, Mr. Overholz.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Eric Overholz. I live at twenty-six Davis Lane in Waynesville. And I'm here to respond, Chairman Ensley, to a comment that you made. It was reported by the Mountaineer on October eighteenth. The topic dealt with concerns over the location of a low-barrier homeless shelter. And you were quoted as saying, "The NIMBY mentality will be an issue no matter where a homeless shelter goes, and it has to go somewhere." Okay, we speak of NIMBY mentality, of course, we're talking about the "not in my backyard" mentality. Mr. Ensley, have you ever noticed that in most communities that have any sense of planning, authorities try to place things like junkyards, incinerators, noisy industrial parks, landfills, animal shelters, jails, prisons, away from residential areas? Why? Because these things, while they are certainly essential services, make life more unpleasant for people in their homes. People don't want their property values decreasing. It's common sense. However, a low-barrier homeless shelter, unlike these other services that I just mentioned, in my opinion, is not essential to Haywood County. And no, it does not need to go somewhere. Haywood County is full of very compassionate people, which I think is a great thing. It is also overrun with agencies, mostly nonprofit, who have not only rolled out the red carpet to help the homeless and the struggling, they've rolled out miles of red carpet. For example, the last time I counted, there were seventeen different places throughout the county where people could get free food. But are there, are the agencies really helping or just enabling recipients? When no accountability is demanded from recipients, no demands to follow up on correcting self-destructive behavior, and no plans for recipients getting gainful employment, agencies just throw good money after bad. The problems persist, and agencies, despite the best intentions, become poverty pimps. Haywood County does not need this. Every governmental solution creates its own set of problems, and often at the expense of others. No community wants to be taken advantage of, and Hazelwood, West Waynesville is no exception. The face of South Main Street from Bellmead all the way to Hyatt Creek is pockmarked with buildings that need to be condemned and torn down. They're already attracting vagrants. A low-barrier homeless shelter will only deteriorate the area more. One paper has already referred to this area as Skid Row. I don't want this moniker attached to my town. So call it NIMBY if you want, sir, but it is not, but it is not in my backyard for a reason. No community in Haywood County wants this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Overholz. Okay, our next speaker, person to sign up to speak is Janie Grove. Welcome, Ms. Grove.
Hello. I was here before because we live, I live at one eighty-six Rachel Drive in Waynesville, which is a vacant lot away from the fairgrounds, Smoky Mountain Events Center. And the noise there is unbelievable, and especially on a Tuesday night, which we have talked about, the decibels, which she just mentioned and so forth, of the sound that's coming through there, because they start about three o'clock in the afternoon practicing, and the speakers that are on top of the hill are what's really affecting our community the most. But the house is vibrating, and we can't even watch TV because it's so loud. But especially, I don't think it's fair to have it on a weeknight because of the, you know, people have to go to work in the mornings, and it's just extremely loud. So in addition to the, you had mentioned about the decibels and that maybe we should get a fair analysis of it, which we can, but I understand that this group is planning on coming back in March of next year. And throughout March, all the way through the summer, I don't see how we can possibly, I don't see how we can stand the noise. And you really have to be there yourself to see how loud it is. And I also talked about other people coming down into our neighborhood to listen to it because they don't have to pay. They could sit in their car, whatever, but to listen to it, they could just sit in our, in our neighborhood. And I have it recorded on my phone, but it's, it doesn't have the same effect as it does if, if, if you were actually there to hear it. And depends on the music, but Tuesday was probably one of the loudest and the worst that we've heard so far this whole month of October. And we're just hoping that it's not gonna come back again because it just isn't fair to the residents, all the way to Lake June Aluska, to the area, the community of Fox Forest Estates, and we're in Regina Park. That whole area is just being bombarded by noise. The fairgrounds never bothered us as far as the sound from the fairgrounds. When they had the fair last year, never, it wasn't in that much of an effect, but when it's blasting, you can't even talk. And our, our house was shaking, it was so loud. And the speakers, if you looked at the back of your wall there, the speakers on the top hill are as big as this wall here. And that's a lot of sound coming out of there. So anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grove. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Joy Hearn. Welcome, Ms. Hearn.
Morning. My name is Joy Hearn. I live at forty-two Fireside Drive in Maggie Valley. I've been there about three and a half years now. Wanted to address the commission, this is, because whatever you do, it's gonna be, it should be a county-wide ordinance on sound. And you get this almost every place in the United States where there's any extended growth, especially where you have incompatible uses next to each other. Every resident of Haywood County is entitled to peaceful and quiet enjoyment of their homes. No one, we have sixty-two, what'd you say, sixty-two thousand residents approximately, deserve the same consideration. As the county experiences growth, you're gonna have these kinds of problems. It has to be set, the ordinance should be set, in my research, by a decibel level, therefore, it's enforceable and constitutional. The, around, I gave you a solution in the last packet I gave you, Mr. Plus, about what some people are doing. They have, they have sound boundaries around airports. When you get to sixty-five decibels or above, you have to soundproof, not you, but the, the county and the city, in this case in Broward, had to soundproof the homes. When it gets much higher, like Mrs. Sexton's, I'm gonna assume that you have an area like they did east of the West Palm Airport near Mar-a-Lago, where they had to buy the homes at fair market value and tear them down. Mar-a-Lago and that area experienced about a thirty percent, it had been, because the airport's been there, has experienced a thirty percent difference in land value between that particular area above, in north of Mar-a-Lago for, I think my analysis went back to the early nineties. So it does impact value. Backing up to highway, maybe ten or fifteen percent, ten percent backing up to school. But under an airport, and you get a sound level like this, it's going to impact value. There are five solutions. Number one, soundproof the homes. Number two, purchase the homes at fair market value and demolish them. Number three, which is the best one, which I believe the Tampa Fairgrounds has used and other places, hire an acoustical engineer to suggest how the sound levels of the homes can be reduced to fifty-five decibels, which was a statewide thing that the, some lawyer at the state came up with, fifty-five decibels was correct. Some, some problems have been solved with area speakers on the grounds where the audience is, where the sound goes in a circumference and is heard by them. We have that solution with one promoter in Maggie. If it's not possible, mitigate the sound to an acceptable level. In my opinion, the sound will fall under the nuisance ordinance, and as a last resort, the sound is deemed not an appropriate or compatible use for this location. The sound should be stopped. Nobody wants to stop, in all honesty, nobody wants to stop the sound. They just want it controlled. And if you have a good acoustical engineer to come out and do the analysis, that should solve the problem. Okay, go to your environmental health guy, okay? This sound is dangerous for these people. Secondly, prove me wrong in the research. And I've got a packet here that, that y'all can look at, one of them from, from another city where they did solve their problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hearn. Would anyone else like to address the board this morning? You know, and I'll close the public comment session. We'll move on to constituent concerns. Mark, you want to start with you this morning? You don't have anything? Kirk, do you have anything?
I don't have any.
Brandon, you have any?
No.
No? Y'all quiet this morning?
I don't think so. I've got some, but we've already took care of them.
Tommy, do you?
Nothing new, no.
Nothing new, okay. Okay. I will say, concerning the, the low-barrier shelter that's been talked about, I'm on the homeless task force. I probably just, I guess I'll just let everybody know. Well, you know, we're working hard on trying to find solutions for the homeless situation. It's a national problem. It's not only in Waynesville, it's in the county, it's in other counties. And we have, and it, while it's true, I think the interview I would, I had given at the newspaper where we were talking about low-barrier shelters, and I said, you know, the problem that we're gonna have to locate one is nobody wants one in their backyard. But we did have one over the course of when COVID first hit, and the low-barrier shelter worked really well. We were able to have folks there, and they were able to get back into employment and, and actually find housing to where they could, you know, kind of gives, gives them a chance to get back on their feet. And I will say too, also, there is a, there are a lot of organizations in the county that do give away food. I'm on Haywood Christian Ministry Board, and we have found, when we, we mostly do heating assistance when I was on that, and we still do on that board. And, but we found, when we started, it was, it was pretty neat. We, they work with Walmart, and Publix has been really great, and then Foodline, and some of the other grocery stores, and food that are, that is basically, that they would normally just throw away, they've been able to get into the hands of people that need it and that can use it. And by doing that, we, we have found that when people have their food needs taken care of, that they have more money for their rent and their utilities. And what we found is, is our, our, our funds that we use to, for these other needs of the, of the county residents have basically gone way down. And so those accounts have gone way down. So we find that, that giving food and getting food to these folks have really helped them with their finances to where they can pay their utility bills and their rent. And we've, we, we have less of that to have to deal with. So the nonprofits in our county are doing a great service, and I'll just remind everybody that Jesus said, "The poor you will have with you always." So we're never gonna get rid of the poor, and we, we, I think our, our community is, our Christian churches and our Christian faith has, basically drives us to make sure that, that we're doing what Jesus told us to do, which is to, to help the needy and the poor. So, so I do want to applaud our, the people that are working hard in that. And we have tons of volunteers in these nonprofits that really, the volunteers is what makes this work, and that's what we found that, that really helps. And it's really just been a matter of help, of having people, of just basically, you, you've got the food that's going into the trash and into the landfill, that's actually going back out into the community, and, and it's helping people. So anyway, I just thought I'd come make those comments on that. Okay, I'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations. And Brian, you have our, some new employees this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through October twenty-third, we have six new employees to announce. In Health and Human Services, we have Madison Zimmerman, Emily Hamilton, Sarah Keener, and Rachel Labarre. In the Sheriff's Office, we have Kendall Foster and Development Services Jacob McKenzie. Six employees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And then, did, Brian, did you want to touch on the employee, the, I know we had asked last time for you to look into that, employee raises.
After the last meeting, we, we started pulling some data, and it looks like if, if the board wanted to go that direction, we could do a two percent COLA across the board for all positions. And, and then we could do up to two percent for, for merit. Last year, we got away from doing merit increases to, to focus on getting all of our pay positions up, and so getting back to merits, where we reward our highest-performing employees, the, the greatest is the goal. So if it would please the board, I could bring back at the, at the next meeting, an approach to do the two percent COLA effective the first full pay period in, in January. And we would also do up to two percent merit first full pay period in January. If your hire date had been between July one and when the, the merit is given, you won't get retro pay. You'll get the two percent effective in that, that January date. If your anniversary date after that, you'll get it on your anniversary date. So if, if you started in March first, you wouldn't get the, the merit in, in January. You would wait till your anniversary date. So we think we could do that for about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like in Will's presentation last time, we've got about half of that covered. So we would ask for an additional pot of money from fund balance, but it looks like we could absorb about half of it now.
Okay. Okay, great. And sales tax is coming in really great still, I guess. Have you, have you got any new numbers on that?
We, we actually got it, I think, Thursday afternoon or Friday. Sales tax was, was, was really good, and Greg shared with me some data. Looked like October was the highest October on, that, that we have data for. So we, we're very conservative in sales tax, and, and we're still watching property tax, because October is not a, a huge property tax month. November, December, and January will determine where we are. But everything's trending in the right direction.
Go ahead, Mark.
Got a question. You were, you were talking about the merit raise. So anyone hired July one through the end of the year wouldn't be eligible for that extra two percent, no matter how they performed? performed?
If they were hired July one of 2020, they would get the two percent COLA, but because they haven't got to their anniversary date, they wouldn't be eligible in, in normal circumstances for that other two percent merit until their anniversary date of July one.
But the existing employees was the ones I was talking about, if they, if their hire date was from July one till December thirty first, or whatever the date you start the pay period, they wouldn't be eligible for that two percent, no matter how they performed in the last year?
No. If they were an existing employee, and they, we'll just say that they are, are eligible for two percent, their evaluation was high enough, they would get the two percent effective that, that date in January. It wouldn't be a retro pay back to, let's say their hire date was July fifth. They, they would just get it January going forward.
Okay, so they would get, they, they would be eligible for all four, as long as their merit raise was recorded, it just wouldn't start till then?
Right, correct.
Okay. I understand that now.
I just feel like we were very conservative when COVID hit, and I feel like that the staff done a good job pulling us through that, revenues are coming in strong. So I'm in favor of the two and two. I think it's a good idea. As Mr. Moorehead mentioned, it's going to reward our, our employees that's doing a better job for us. And so I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm all for it, so.
I appreciate you and Julie and Will and everybody that's worked on this, and Kathy, I know, and HR has worked on, you know, trying to make sure. And it's really good, I really, I'm just thankful that our, our revenue's coming in really good. You know, we, we had some dire projections, and it didn't appear that, doesn't appear that those are coming true, thank goodness. And, and maybe we're on the, on a good, good course for the future.
Kevin?
Yeah?
One more thing, if you don't mind, I just wanted to be sure also, I know that we had discussed the Christmas bonuses, I guess they're still in there, is that correct?
Christmas bonus, we're, we're part of the adopted budget, so.
That's what I thought, just making sure. I've slept since then.
It, it slips my mind, Julie, what date are we going to try to get those paid? Do you, I hate to put you on the spot, but.
Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Okay. Okay, great. Okay. Be, be good for Black Friday. Okay. I hope Black Friday's a, a good day. Anybody have anything else? I thought while we were on employees, we'd touch on that. I appreciate that, Brian. Okay, our next order of business will be, not, not so good, but we'll review the jail needs assessment. We have our chief deputy, Jeff Haynes, here, and Mosley Architects Vice Presidents Todd Davis Senior, Don Mace, and Captain Glenn, I guess that's my tabass of Mosley Architects this morning. Welcome this morning, Chief Haynes.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll just take just a moment to, to preface this and say that a number of months ago, we were asked to look at, and began to look at a jails, our jail assessment, as far as a space needs study that needed to be done as we've moved on, and as, as some age and, has come on the jail and, and detention facility, and, and obviously, our population is growing as well, too. So with that said, got a presentation today, and, and with us, as the chairman had said, we, we've got Todd Davis and Dan Mace, both Vice Presidents with Mosley Architects, and Captain Glenn Madiabas is our, our resident expert on detention facilities. So with that, I'll step out of the way.
Thank you. It's, it's nice to be back in front of the board again, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Morehead. It's been several months, I think, the last time I was in front of you when we were getting this process started. To start with, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't think the Sheriff's Office and their personnel would help and gather some of the data and facilitate our engineers to, to go through the building. A lot of that happened right at the onset of COVID, so it was a little bit challenging to, to look at a lot of that. But it was, it was really, really thankful to the effort of the Sheriff's Office that accommodated our needs to, to move forward. Is there a? The, the agenda for today, the chief introduced, with me is Dan Mace. Dan is Vice President, and he's in charge of our justice sector. Mosley's made up of several different sectors. Our justice sector, we look at jails, prisons, anything in the justice arena. And so that makes up our, our team that's present here today, in addition to the Sheriff's Office personnel. First thing we're going to do is go over the bed projections that I think you've already, already been privy to, and then we'll, I'll hand it over to Dan, who will cover the development options, as well as the cost projections. We started with average daily population. The average daily population is, is merely that, is the average number of inmates that make up your jail during any given year, any given month, any given day. As we move forward with this, there's a couple of, couple of terms that you're going to hear me relate to, average daily population, rated capacity. The rated capacity is the capacity that the state gave you when the current facility was constructed. It's the number of rated beds that meet state standard. The, the other term that we're going to talk about is occupational, operational capacity, which the number, operational capacity is about seventy-five percent of your rated capacity. It enables you to separate offenders based on their classification type. For example, if you've got a housing unit with twenty-four female beds, but you only have ten females, you can't put anything else in there. So that separation of that classification is needed. That's why operational capacity is, is important. All these bed projections were done based on historic data and then carrying that forward. You can see in 2015, your average daily population was about one seventeen. Twenty sixteen, it dropped a little bit to one oh seven. And then 2019, it was as high as one twenty-four was your average. The average during that five-year study period was one seventeen. This next graph is a little bit busy, but just to show you the differences. The blue bar is your average daily population for that year. The green is when you peaked. Different times throughout the year, whether it's DEA comes and does a roundup, probation parole, Sheriff's Office, or just numbers increase for whatever reason, that was some peak times. The red line that you see going across, that shows operational capacity. That's where you can operate safely and be able to classify and separate those offenders. You can see across the bottom, we did the percentages showing 2015, 2016, you had a decrease of about nine and a half percent. But then seventeen, you went up ten, up another two, and then up another four as it went along. Historical admissions, that's everyone that was admitted into the jail during that year. Twenty fifteen, you see that number, twenty sixteen, it dropped a little bit, and then it's gone as high as almost four thousand in 2019. This is just another shot showing how much that increased, and the percentage of increase that you see from year to year on your admissions. And projected admissions, projected admissions are used by the number of missions you had historically, and then we did an admission rate based on county population. County population numbers moving forward were obtained from North Carolina Office of State Budget Management, which I think that's probably what your county uses, it's what every county in the state of North Carolina pretty much uses to go by. I will say, we have found historically, those projections are very conservative. So moving forward, taking that admission rate, Haywood County, out of every ten thousand of population, you're admitting about six hundred and thirty-one residents. That doesn't necessarily mean they are Haywood County residents. You know, people, offenders are not limited by boundary geographically. They could be coming from Jackson County, they could be coming from, frankly, they could be coming from anywhere, they could be coming out of state even. But that's the, that's the best way to determine it, is based on what your county population is to give you that admission rate. These, these formulas are not just something that we developed, but it's what the National Institute of Corrections recommends. I have tweaked some of that a little bit, just based off experience, to make it a little bit more realistic, and not a national plan, but something that's a little bit more catered to our area. Average length of stay is very important. Kind of related to like a hotel. If you stay two weeks at a hotel, that hotel's going to need more rooms than if somebody just stays one night. Same thing in a jail. If they, if they're staying longer, then the longer that length of stay is, then the more beds you're going to need. That's why it's very critical. I will tell you, you are way below the average. Normally, what we see is when it gets to be twenty-four, twenty-five days, average length of stay, that's a red flag to me. That tells me that your criminal justice system, from the courts to the DA to whatever, is not working that efficiently. The problem with yours being low, I'm not so sure is that sustainable. It has been, but you can see it's been some ups and downs throughout. That is a incredibly low number. With that said, your, your DA's office, your court system, and your jail staff has got to be working pretty strongly together to try to expedite these people through the court cases and get them out of the jail. I would not be shocked if that number's not going up. The more severe offenders is what drives that number up. And with this COVID, we're trying to get out these lesser offenders. So the ones that are staying are staying there longer because of their seriousness of their charge. Just another graph that shows where the average length of stay dropped. I can tell you, in North Carolina, we, we've done probably in the last, God, ten years, Dan, when you say forty or fifty of these statewide, that number that you have is one of the lowest that we've seen. So you ought to be applauded by, by your, your criminal justice system working like that. Calculating the peaking ratio, even though there's times that it peaks, you still have to have a place to put these offenders. You can't just sit them in a chair and say, okay, let's just wait. We looked at every single admission. National Institute of Corrections, where I said I tweaked our, our process a little bit, they tell you to take a week every quarter. So you're basically looking at only four weeks a year. Having run a facility in North Carolina and understanding how that works, you may, you may be able to ship thirty or forty to Department of Corrections this week. So that number may have been way low of what it would be. Or you may have done a big roundup, and it may have been higher. So I actually looked at every single day for five years. Little bit more work, but I think it makes it a little bit more accurate, more realistic, especially in our area. With that said, we looked at the high numbers in each year. Twenty fifteen, you were at one forty-nine, not just once, but several times. If, if we had just one day that you reached high, I kind of threw that out. That was just one day out of three sixty-five, I didn't think warranted showing a peaking for just one day. So you see, 2019, you were at one fifty-four. And so with that, we, we came up with a peaking ratio of one point two eight on average for that five years. It shows again where your ups and downs of how you peaked. Using that admission rate and trying to carry, carry this forward, is how we use the formula to look at the forecasted average daily population. And then with classification, in order to separate your, your aggravated felons, your white collar felons, your misdemeanors and all of that, that we, we, we did twenty percent, NIC says twenty-five. I, I think that if we could only do twenty percent, anything less than a five hundred bed facility works. I think twenty-five percent is a little much. Then we added the peaking ratio, which gave us the classified and peak numbers. So you can see right now, through the year 2045, you're looking at a bed need to properly classify and allow for peak times, a facility of about two hundred and fifty-nine beds. Now, turn it over to Dan. I will say, you're rated by the state at one forty-nine. That does include the annex of forty beds, which has its own issues to deal with from a, from a design layout.
Thank you, Todd, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Taking Todd's needs projections and looking at your existing facility and analyzing how best to expand that facility, we've come up with this design that you see here. If you're familiar with the site, I guess the, you know, as you look at this plan, the railroad tracks will be to plan north, if that kind of orients you. The little shaded L shape is that older dorm facility that really is functionally inadequate. That will need to be demolished as part of this expansion. It's really an open, old, open dorm anyway, and is, is not, not safe to operate. We've got a physical connector, the existing facility was master planned for an expansion, so that's, you'd be commended for that, to acknowledge that this facility would need to be expanded someday. So it makes it very easy for us to add this building on and minimize ongoing disruption to ongoing operations, which is important. It's kind of near the loading area. Again, we can stay out of the way of all that and expand the facility accordingly. This is the floor plan we've come up with. Again, this is, this is a planning level plan, working with Glenn and, and the Sheriff's Staff and stakeholders. We've come up with this based upon the type of beds that would best augment what you currently have. These beds are all cells that would be sized for double occupancy, should you need to have them. But some have been allocated for single use. You're always going to have a need for maximum security. Some inmates just cannot play well with others, so they need to be separated. But this gives you a lot of flexibility in how you may need it, because that changes over time. You know, Glenn can't determine who's going to be booked in next week. It could be completely different than the types of inmates that are booked in the previous week. So these facilities have to be able to adapt to that, to accommodate them safely. This was one of the deriving factors, obviously, is operational safety. Safety for inmates on inmates, as well as the staff of the facility, the officers that work in there, we're obligated to keep them safe as well. And we also wanted to design something that would be very staff efficient. You can, you know, the life, for the lifespan of a, of a building like this, seventy-five percent of the total cost will be in operations and maintenance. So to the extent that we can reduce that, we've saved the county money. So we wanted to really look at designing a very efficient and staff-efficient facility. You can see the little diamond shape in yellow right in the middle, that, these are control rooms that observe two housing units at once. This is what we call indirect podular supervision. It's a safe way to visually command the, the housing unit. Both Todd and I serve on the North Carolina Jail Standards Committee, so the new standards have gone into effect, which require recreation yards and indoor recreation capacity for each facility that's designed in the state. So what you see at the top are secure exterior recreation spaces where the inmates can be brought out and, for fresh air, as required by standard. But you're not having to escort them. Again, that's staff inefficient, if you're having to move inmates in and out, it's also hazardous. So the design of these housing units are really centered around keeping the inmate on the housing unit until it's time, it's time for them to leave or, or, or be transported. The little spaces in green beside the control rooms on each housing unit are multi, what we call multipurpose rooms. That's where you can bring in, you know, clergy, you can bring in, you know, English as a second language, you can bring in any numbers of programs that hopefully will help these inmates not show back up again. So that's, that's a program space that we've allocated for each housing unit, so you can, you can offer those programs. you can offer those programs should, should you, you want to. The, the space down below, that rectangle running horizontally is an eight-bed administrative segregation unit, a single story, so there's just eight beds in there. Each one of the four units that you see, if you double occupy them, they're 39 beds. We always have to have one bed that's there for ADA needs, and I can only put one bunk in them, so that's why you see the, the 39. So that's four of those. The one in purple to the far left, we've designated as a single occupied, or in our count, as a 20-bed single occupied housing unit. But should you need it over time, you can, you can legally double occupy it and stay in the standard, which ultimately this plan that we show you gives you that range of 145 beds to, if you were to double occupy that purple unit, it would take you to 168. Am I doing that right? Another 20, 20 bed, another 19 beds on it. So that, that gives you kind of that range of, of beds that we're planning that you can accommodate. But really for, for your needs, we're looking at 100, rating it at 145. This is the mezzanine level. Again, each, each of those four up top or has a cell on top of another cell. It's kind of an open area, very traditional jail design. But you can see there's very limited sightline issues, so you don't have any blind corners in them. Again, that's the way you can operate it and observe it safely. Now, how much does all this cost? We looked at where we are from where we, where we sit now. I will, I will tell you, we've bid a number of these facilities this year, and we've been very encouraged with what we've seen. If there is any type of light at the end of the tunnel with COVID, it's, it's helped construction prices go down. We were seeing it really skyrocket over the last couple of years, and it, it took a really stiff halt, and it's now at six, eight-year lows, we're seeing in the marketplace. So if you have anything to put on the street right now, I suggest you do it, because contractors are bidding them tight and construction prices are consistently been low latter part of this year. So I didn't, you know, I didn't want to necessarily factor that in, because I don't know how long that's going to be. You know, were you to mobilize us today, we're still, you know, roughly 10 months away from seeing natural construction prices that would be bid. So I've got to try to look into the future, and I want to be conservative with the numbers I give you. We don't like to come in front of you and ask for more money later. I don't think that's what you would want. So again, these are planning level numbers that I think the county can work within. So I would hopefully, and I would anticipate everything coming within this number and not spending this amount, but at this, at where we are right now, I recommend you budget accordingly. And the first, top six line items are items that we've identified in the, in the project that are needed, including some interior renovations. We're going to have to, we're going to have to take our security electronics and integrate them into your current master control system. So there's some work that we have to do inside in a phased activity with your current facility to get it where everything works harmoniously. And, and then there's some site demolition, of course, of the existing dorm facility. And, and then I've also got two contingencies in there. Going into construction, when we get to that point, I still recommend the county continue with a 5% contingency. That's for unknown soil conditions, Murphy, who knows? I recommend you carry that, but until then, I'm, I've got 10% on there. So, you know, that's, that's where that, where I feel that, that, you know, the, the area we can work within would be. And the four line items below that are miscellaneous project costs. North Carolina now requires us to have mechanical commissioning done, third-party commissioning, and those fees are, are in this. You've got fixtures, furnishings and equipment. That's anything, if you were to turn the building upside down and shook it, it fell out, that would be the FF and E allocation there, which you're going to need. So I've got those line, those budgeted here as well as percentage multipliers. So that gives us a total project cost in that you don't have to buy any additional property at just under 16 and a half million. That's where we would recommend you budget the project. And with that, I'd like to bring up Glenn, if I could, to discuss the timeline that we're looking at.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted just to talk about and certainly give credence to Chief Ains, is actually a lot of work he did as far as the projected timeline, as far as what we're looking at. So from November 2nd, as far as the space needs, the presentation we're doing today, hopefully we have an RFQ that finance was very helpful with, and I'd like to certainly recognize Peggy Coke for all her hard work as far as with that. We do have an RFQ should you decide to move forward with the release of that project as far as for costs. And then November 30th is looking when the return of the RFQ, and then December 9th, again, having the Commissioners' interviews as far as to take a look as far as those bidders, and then December 21st of 2020, another Commissioners' presentation, and then January 4th, having the Commissioners then, should you wish to bid the award, as far as moving forward on this particular project from a construction standpoint. So with that, just to certainly any questions that you might have from Mosley Architects, from Todd, or from Dan, or myself, that I could answer for you, I'd be more than happy to do that, or from the chief or the sheriff.
Glenn, I'd hate to put you on the spot, but right now, if, if we send inmates out, or if we had to do that, do you have an idea on cost?
Yes, so that's one thing, as I was sitting here, that certainly that you can take a look at, unfortunately. So one thing that's a bit difficult, when you take a look at the statewide misdemeanor confinement program, which we have had to lower those numbers, which is a volunteer program, we get $40 per day. When you send inmates out, it's generally $55 per day that they're going to charge you from another county. As I was sitting here and just kind of going through, because I threw some other stats, I'm a data guy, and so some other numbers that I did give to the sheriff and the chief when you take a look at that. So currently, the sheriff loves to do things, I understand that, meantime we have to do an annual report, and so they run from January 1 to December 31st, but I'm a money guy, so I always look at the fiscal year. So what happened July 1 all the way to June 30th? So ran back through FY '20, and what we were taking a look as far as on the cost for us, and so it went from last year, we were actually at a cost of $76, $85 per day per inmate. That's the total cost of all your operational budget, salaries, everything included in there. So for this fiscal year that we just finished, it went up a little bit because our average daily population went down a little bit, and that was really because somewhat in there with a bit, with COVID, but also as far as in that with the pretrial program. So our ADP went down to 117 per day. And so that cost, the cost went up a little bit, which it went to $83.38 per day. And so we've been staying fairly consistent, actually. I was very pleased with some of the overall costs that we did have. There's a couple of main costs that I take a look at just as a cost per day. One is medical. The other one we have is the food cost, which is our two major big costs in our budget. And then the other one is overtime when it comes to staffing, and we've done quite well, with the exception of the medical cost has gone up a little bit, which we had some pretty strong outliers in there with our overall medical cost and certain things that we've had to certainly increase. But we've been successful in there. So like this past year, it was 3.5 million was our total budget that we ended up having, but again, so the cost per inmate per day is 83.38. So when you take a look at, but you're only getting $40 a day from the statewide misdemeanor program, why do you house inmates? Well, it's still additional revenue that is coming in, and so the other revenue that we take a look at is from commissary inmate phone system, so we do have funds that are coming in to help us with the overall cost per day. But when you send them out, it's going to be a minimum $55 per day. And we've been fortunate, because the female population, which is unique, generally, we've run high, which I'm almost 100%. So I would have anticipated sending females out this past budget year, but we didn't have to. But I think it was because of the pretrial program and then COVID, actually we were able to switch the female unit, which is a 31-bed unit, to a smaller unit, which is 23-bed, but we've been able to manage to keep that down. But I am a bit worried, once COVID is done and things go back to normal, where that population is going to be. And so I would have anticipated sending somebody out. But that's a great question. It's another problem. You want to say something, Brian?
Just, just kind of follow up on, on the timeline, Mr. Chairman. If, if, if the board's okay with it, we, we do have the RFQ ready to release. When we get that back, we've set a, sort of set up a committee to, to put some eyes on it. Of course, the sheriff's office, they have to have their expertise, finance, facilities and IT, because there's so much technology in, in it. We'll need representatives from there to make sure that everything will work. We'll evaluate the, the qualifications of the architects that respond and, and bring forward to you guys the, the one that we think will do the best job for us. It's, it's a complicated project, and you can see the timeline extends all the way to January of, of 2021, when we would award the, the construction bid, or 2022, I'm sorry.
I just had a, one question was, I think it was, Mr. Mace indicated that construction prices were lower, and I, I was just surprised to hear that. I don't know if that's commercial construction, because I know residential construction and getting materials is very difficult right now and higher. So is that because it's commercial construction that construction prices are lower right now?
Yes, sir. It surprised me too. I thought with the supply chain, we, we've been seeing higher prices, but we have not seen that in the, in the competitive bid market. What I would recommend you do with a complex, and it's really specifically to detention centers and, and, and complex buildings like courthouses and, you know, that's kind of what I focused my career on. So I just know that from what I'm seeing out in the bidding market. And the only thing I can tell you is, we recommend that you prequalify your general contractors prior to the general bid. That kind of keeps the, I think it keeps the quality firms that have experience in complex construction focusing on your project. They like to compete with other good firms rather than worrying about the, like the pickup truck guy from Florida or something like that. So I think that may have had something to do with it. We've had great competitors, great subcontractor interest. I think it may be the fear in the marketplace that was in there because of a worry about potential future work that might or might not appear, that's got the pencil sharp. We bid, I'll give you an example. We bid Johnston County's new detention center a couple of months ago. It's under construction now, and, you know, not that I wish I could do this for every project, came in $12 million under my budget. And it's a large project, you know, standalone, large-scale project, a lot larger than what we're talking about here, but I couldn't believe it. You know, I, it was astounding, and we had a very qualified contractor. I just bid a juvenile facility in Charleston, South Carolina, which is another, usually a very expensive market with high soil cost, and it came in $2.5 million on their budget on about a $15 million job. So we, I'm, I can't explain it, but I'm just happy to see it. And, and I, but the number that I've given you to share with you, you know, I just don't know how long we can keep it, so I didn't, I didn't bake the numbers down to where we're actually seeing right now. I anticipated it being in the order of, you know, of what without COVID, I might have seen it this year. So I'm, I'm just trying to be conservative, because again, we don't want to have things march back up over the course of next year and not have enough money budgeted to, to do your job that you need. So that's kind of the art, I guess, or, you know, of what I do, so.
All right, thank you. That provides some insight.
We should have a more, you know, scientific answer for you. It's just what we see in the North Carolina market.
Right. Thank you. Sure.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, because I thought construction prices were really high. So that's a good thing. And interest rates are low. Go ahead.
No, I just, I think I heard him say we were going to come way in under budget on this. Is that what you guys heard?
I don't know if I want to tell any contractors that right now.
I just, enough the sheriff wanted to tell you, thank you, or give him an opportunity.
Do you want to say anything, Sheriff?
Sheriff's gotten older. Better put that mask on before you come up here.
While, while he's coming up, I will say that I appreciate Glenn. Glenn and I go back a long way, and I, I know the sheriff appreciates having him and in the position he's in, we're lucky to have him, and knowing that he's had a part in this makes me feel a little more comfortable as well, so.
What I'll say about that, Brandon, is thank God for good people that work with us, and this guy right here, he's top-notch. I want to say that we have worked very, very hard to try to keep these numbers down inside that jail. We have, we, we knew coming in, whenever I become sheriff nearly eight years ago now, that we was already above the maximum number of inmates that was supposed to be in that facility. And because of the different programs, the different faith-based organizations that's come to help us, as well as many nonprofits, as well as the Commissioners, you gentlemen have, have been there to help us, and I appreciate every bit of that. But we're just at the point that we're going to need to do something now, but hopefully a project like this will, many, many years down the road, be something that the county will not have to spend more money on. As you saw the projections, he's pushed it out to 2045, so more than likely, some of you guys may still be Commissioners then, but I can assure you, I won't be the sheriff in 45. But it is something that I believe as we, if we are going to look ahead, and if it's $17 million now, you can imagine what it'll be later on if, if we do wait. The biggest thing that concerns us is the new jail rules that just came out, and they went into effect in September. For our maximum number of inmates in that facility at one time, that the state says that we can have anything over that, then I have to send them out. I don't have any choice no matter. And so that's going to start costing our county as, as time goes on, because they will only let me keep the number that, that the, that the state says that I can keep. And of course, obviously, I looked today, I was at 110, and we can keep 110. So we're, we're, we're at that number now, unfortunately. And of course, I know this thing will take a couple of years to build, if not more, but it's just one of those things that, that we're going to have to address. You know, going back and looking at the annex, the annex that probably at one time was, was, was probably a good facility, but of course, we, we have spent a tremendous amount of money on it, and it continues to be a facility that we can only keep child support, very, very low bond type folks in there, and now we're not getting those really low bond people. The pretrial release program cuts most of those very small bond people out pretty early. And of course, so I have a, I have a building sitting down there that's really not, not good for anything from a law enforcement detention center standpoint, because we can't lock the doors. You know, it, it's really hard to say that that's part of a jail whenever that we can't lock the doors on the facility. You know, I've got a, got a fence around it, but obviously, we have saw people climb that fence and, and scale that, that thing pretty quickly. So we're, we're just between a rock and a hard place. And like I said, hey, for the last eight years, we have had, we've done a lot of work to keep this from happening, but we're at that point now, and especially since the new rules came out in September. That, that, that really handcuffed us.
Well, when you look at the numbers, it's pretty impressive, Sheriff, of you being able to keep the jail population down, because, you know, the numbers that they've got on here, that, the levels in 2015 to 2019, and those haven't fluctuated much at all. And that goes to the faith-based programs that you've, that you've encouraged down there and the nonprofits that have worked. And it's like you and I have discussed before, if we didn't have these nonprofits, people don't realize how much tax money they'd be spending right now, because, well, this is a good example of it. We've put this off for eight years, because when you came on board, we thought we were here, we're there then, and now, and we, and we're just now looking at it. So I think as a taxpayer, as personally as a taxpayer who pays a lot of property taxes, I appreciate everything that the churches and the nonprofits have done to keep that jail population down and to really change people's lives for the better. And... jail population down and to really change people's lives for the better. And this really shows up when you delve into the numbers and go back and look at it. So, and we know that those programs work, and they really, mainly, they help people. So, but I just want to point out to everybody that this shows that the hard work that the sheriff's done and all the people that you've encouraged to do that work there, and that we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you, all that credit goes to the good Lord himself and all of these churches and nonprofits that has stepped up to help us. You know, we have been very, very blessed to have over 700 people, you know, that has stepped up to the plate and said, hey, I'll take some of, I'll shoulder some of the responsibility of helping these people, and it has proved to work.
And I think you said you had a jail inspector there that couldn't believe our numbers either. I mean, he'd come to look, and you started telling him what our numbers was, and he just couldn't believe it because he's going all over the state, and he sees all the counties and what's been happening there, and I think he thought it was unbelievable what you've been able to do. I think that's a big plus.
Hey, our jail inspector, he's a great guy, but he keeps us in line, but he has commented many times about our numbers as opposed to a lot of other jails that he deals with. Any questions to me?
I've got a question or two. Staff-wise, how many are you going to need to run this new part?
That's a great question, and...
That's the other piece of the puzzle that's not too pleasant.
One thing the sheriff mentioned was exactly correct, but just in terms, when you talk about the annex, it's not I-3 rated, but it's built to hold 40. So when we report out what's our current rated capacity, we say it's 149, but that's not really true. So when he says right now, today, we're at 110, our max capacity at the main facility is 109. So we currently, right now, have to deal with it, and yet, and actually, as we were talking, the jail inspector texted me to, hey, call me when you get a chance. I said, sure, no problem, and the commissioner's beating, I'll call you, see how I'm done. But one thing I do want to point out, because I know the commissioners have a lot of challenges. When I came to Haywood and saw what we have to deal with, the opioid issues, homeless issues, and then we only had one shelter at the time as far as what ends up happening. And a lot of these folks that have substance abuse issues can't get into these shelters. The main jail, which I'll just be quite honest with you, when I got here, I was nice to share with Christian, but it's very poorly designed. So what I mean by that, there's not a rec area or a multipurpose room off each housing. You only have one multipurpose room, which they call the library, that you got to bring inmates out, and every time the jail inspector comes, he says, Glenn, you got to do something about this, that you bring inmates right through your control room. You never do that. So how that really kind of passed, I'm really not sure, but in the design, I'm sure they really had to cut costs when they took a look at that. If you'll notice on these designs, they do have a rec area. They also have a multipurpose room that focuses on the programming to cut down, certainly on the recidivism. So what's happening, if you decide to do this, the annex goes away, so it takes us to 109. You could space it out how you want to open it, but we're only going to be right back where we were if you open up one housing unit of the 39 that we have. But the fully staff for the 145 additional beds that we're talking about, you're talking about five additional staff per squad. So that's another 20 officers that we would need to staff currently that we already have. But again, where our average daily population would be, obviously, once it's built, you're not going to need that whole 145 beds that is built, so you could certainly stage that out how you needed to. The other thing I wanted to point out was this, and it's interesting to me, when I got to Haywood and I took a look at this, so of the, so we had, during the budget year, we had 3,541 people that were booked in. Out of that group is what I call unique individuals. That's just one individual coming in. So there was 1,682 unique individuals processed into the jail. But of those people, 703 of them made up 72% of that 3,541 bookings. So you're, it's the same 703 that if you could deal with would help you, and that's what really has helped, that we focused on, but your programming, your faith-based groups, and a lot of the, certainly assistance within the county has been helpful to manage that. But that's really what you got to manage while those numbers are going to go up. So, but to me, when I take a look at that, to me, that's astounding, but what can we do to deal with those 703 individuals and identifying who they are and what the needs are? But that's really as far as on the staffing, what it would take, because you have five housing units that would be added to the current jail. So, but again, as you saw, going all the way to 2045, and so you wouldn't have to open up the entire jail, but at some point, you are going to need it.
One more question, sir. I know how hard it is to get people. I get to see the people, the positions are being posted, and the people are getting hired, and it seems to be a turnover rate or lack of interest, and I don't know which one that is, you would have to decide. What do we need to do if we go this route, that you could get 20 officers that would want to do this? Is the colleges, the high schools, who do we need to target to try to find people? Because if you're going to be open in a year or two, it's going to take a little while to generate some interest to get people to do it.
Hey, you're exactly right. That's a great question, Mark, and I appreciate you asking that question. What we're going to have to do is we're going to have to treat detention officers like we do deputy sheriffs. They're going to have to be on the same level. We're going to have to pay them just like, in the same amount that we do a deputy sheriff. There's two different standards, it seems, throughout our state and probably throughout the nation, the way that people look at detention officers as opposed to the way they look at law enforcement, the guys with the guns and the badges. But at the end of the day, those people inside that detention center, they are, for 12 hours at a time, absolutely consumed with dealing with inmates. They get very few breaks. They don't get a mealtime. They just catch it when they can. Hey, they're just like going to the restroom. They just catch that time to be able to run to the restroom as quickly as they can and get back on post. We need to treat detention officers just like we do our law enforcement sworn deputy sheriffs. If we do that, I think that's going to help us. We also need to continue our program that we've gotten started now here in the county, where we actually bring somebody in, start them as a detention officer, help them go through BLET, and then work them onto the road if that's what, that they want to go. We're now working on our third candidate for that, who we have hired and brought them in and actually invest in them so that they will, so that they have a goal of doing something else other than just detention. And so we're on number three right now. The county manager has blessed us with being able to help us get that done, and we're starting to see the fruits of that now. But we do need our pay for a detention officer to be what it is for a deputy sheriff, because, you know, the thing about a deputy sheriff, he arrests someone, he has to deal with them, but it's for a short period of time, probably an hour or less. He takes them and hands them to that detention officer. Well, now, they're, that detention officer's responsibility for 11 more hours, and the deputy sheriff, he gets to go and kind of unwind, so to speak, go to a convenience store and get him something to drink, and then go to that next call that he needs to go to. These people never get to leave that facility. Some of them never get to walk out of that pod, and we're just in a situation where it is, it's probably the hardest job in our county. I don't know, I don't know of a job, of a job being physical or mental that's more difficult in our county than being a detention officer. I have the utmost respect for those folks, and they have a tough, tough job. So to be honest with you, that's the only thing that I know that would help us, would be for us to make sure that we treat them just like we do our deputies. And right now, we're about a dollar and a half an hour off from that, and sometimes even more, you know, whenever somebody comes in that's got some experience on the road. But we always treat our detention officers at that base rate, so we definitely need to do something to help us. Right now, six officers, sure. We are advertising on everything that we know to advertise on, and we're working our way through that situation, but, hey, thank you for asking that question. I appreciate that. You being EMS and emergency services guy, you know what that is, very, very much so. So I appreciate that.
You have, whenever you hire them, do you send them to school? Or are these people, I know from EMS and some law enforcement, they go to school on their own, and once they receive a certification, you hire them. Are detention officers the same way, or do you hire them and then send them to school?
We hire them and then send them to school within that first year that they are employed at sheriff's office. Actually, by jail standards, by sheriff's standards, they have to go to detention school before their one, their first year is completed. So we do pay for them to go to detention school. It's five weeks long.
So Greg, getting back to the, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So really, getting the word out is going to be the biggest thing in raising the pay to where people actually would be interested in doing stuff like that? Do we have any kind of a campaign going on that you know of right now?
Do we have?
Any kind of a campaign going on right now, public safety-wise, that we're advertising for employees, showing benefits, things like that?
We just started this past week on two social media sides of getting the word out that, hey, Haywood County is hiring detention officers, and we actually got 11 applications this past week. So, hey, that was exciting for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving forward, we're proposing adding 145 beds on top of the 110 roughly. So that puts us on up to 255. The 110-bed facility, how many more years do you think life expectancy on it is? I mean, it's in good shape. It's not very old, so we're looking to be able to use that facility for several years also. Is that correct?
Some of the things that they would need to do as far as, one thing that helps, you know, move the inmates from one housing unit to another.
You'll need to come up to, you'll need to come up to the mic.
So one thing that does help out having a new facility is you can move a whole housing unit into the other area and go back and fix some of the things, you know, but it's really cosmetic-type things that we've already done. We've already done a lot of tremendous work with the security system and the locking system to keep them up to date, so certainly, we continue to do that to make sure, but yes. So obviously, it would age, but for a lot of things we've already done in anticipation, we've already addressed a lot of the maintenance issues for that jail. So we certainly see that that moving forward even to 2045.
I don't have any questions. I have a few comments to expand what you had said earlier. I mean, there's a, the regulations have really driven us to make these changes. When I first started practicing law, you know, I rode a elevator up to the jail up here, and if it was somebody that wasn't in real bad trouble, they'd just say, all right, I didn't need to see him for too long. The detention officer would just say, just walk on back there and talk to him. Of course, I'd be back there with every one of them, you know, walking around the jail, talking to them. Well, you can't do that anymore. And then, then, of course, we had the satellite facility that you could house people, and everybody wanted to go to satellite facility because it wasn't as stringent as, of course, being over here. Of course, now, you can't house people in a satellite facility. So that's, people, what I want people to understand is that we may not have that many more offenders than we have had in the past, although we do have more, but these regulations are requiring segregation that we haven't had before between, of course, obviously, you have segregation between men and women, but you've got men, women, violent offenders and misdemeanants. You've got men, violent offenders and misdemeanants, and then you've got some people that have mental issues as well, and so we have to segregate all those folks. And so you really need more beds than you have, I mean, just the number of people. So that's what's causing, the main reason that's causing this expansion. I mean, we hope to keep less people in jail, but if you can, but I think that's the main reason, and people need, I just want them to understand that, that it's because of that type of segregation that's being required.
I thought the same thing. Jail reform is beyond our jurisdiction, so whatever those numbers are comes from above. And, you know, we're handed these things down. I guess there's a lot of smart people looking at those things, so if jail reform needs to happen as far as what we're required to provide inmate, that would come from somebody besides this board. And I think that's what Commissioner Patrick was getting at, just to let everybody know that, you know, we're handed down these regulations from Raleigh or from a federal level, and we have to adhere to those things, so.
And they are. There are state mandates that unfortunately, they keep pushing them down to people like all of us here on the county level, and unfortunately, the only thing now, if we don't abide by, is a 1983 federal lawsuit or some kind of a state lawsuit in many different ways, so something that we, unfortunately, we're just going to have to, at some point, go ahead and take care of.
It's nice if they send down mandates and send a bag of money with it, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah. Anything else?
Do you have any questions? Go ahead, Brad.
Back to what Commissioner Pless brought up, just to plug HR, Kathy and Crystal have spent quite a bit of time in the detention center interviewing our employees, finding out what makes good detention officers, why people stay, why they leave. And so money is certainly a big one, but also, there are other things that maybe we can do structurally to keep employees, because I think retention, every time someone leaves, it costs us about $17,000. And so we're trying to figure out how to keep that turnover from happening so we can keep, you know, the sheriff from having six vacancies at one time. So HR's working on that, and I think we'll have a blueprint to help that turnover.
Hey, and I thank you for reminding me of that. Those two ladies sitting up there on the front, they have spent many hours in the last three months inside our detention center, talking with our employees and really, really diving into what we can do from a county perspective. So thank you, ladies. Thank you for reminding me of that. I appreciate that. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
I have one question for Brian, and this might put you on the spot a little bit. Almost 17 million is a big number, but what does that equate to finance-wise on an annual something? Nothing concrete, just a general idea, since that is your expertise.
It's a big number, and we've looked at it, and because some of our debt's falling off and we be bringing new debt on, it's probably in that 2.5 to 3 cent on the tax rate level. That's just for the debt side. I think Glenn mentioned staffing. You start having to hire 20 employees, and let's just use 60,000 with salary and benefits and everything. That almost adds, you know, another penny, 2 cents on the tax rate when it's fully staffed. Debt's probably manageable in that 2 to 3 range, and by the time we would have to have 20 employees, then we'd probably be, you know, a like increase, probably 4 or 5 cents when all said and done, when you factor in food, healthcare, all of the heating of 33,000 additional square feet. We're still working on some estimates, but it's a big number.
But when do we think it would be open? Two years a fair estimate?
I think if we awarded the construction contract in January, or the, I'm sorry, the architect contract, and they had the design, we got everything back from the state and put it out on the street, I think we'd probably award the construction contract somewhere in November, December, January of, November, December of '21, January of '22, and then probably 18-month build. So, you know, this is a long project, maybe 30 months or so.
It would be really nice if you could find some money, some of those It would be really nice if you could find some money, some of those two-cent things every year to pay off some of the debt we have now, make it look a whole lot better whenever we had to take on more if we had some of our others down a little bit.
The other debts coming off, we're in very good shape as far as the debt ratio. What the board and Julie over the last 10 years have done has been fantastic. We knew this was coming. It's never a good time to spend $16 million, but we're in good position, and rates are low. So, we'll proceed and hope for the best.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? That is a big number. I meant to say something during constituent concerns. I hate to do that. You know, I got in a letter, I think I reported it to everybody, about, she was concerned, my mom was concerned about their kids being able to play sports. And with the governor shutting down, I guess, they're thinking maybe they're going to shut down their seasons. Would anybody have any problem with me sending a letter, just asking the governor to, I don't think it, to, you know, let the seasons, the sports seasons go? I mean, to let them play?
No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't have no objection at all. I'd support it.
I don't have a problem with that. I've been following some of that, the conversation, and it's the high school athletic department, whoever manages their athletes is the ones who are talking about it. I don't know that the governor has spoken anything about it.
Okay.
But it's something they're doing. So, when you're sending him something, it might be worthwhile to send them something.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to step over the school board, but I just, you know, the mom, ask us to maybe weigh in a little bit. You have anything, Kirk or Tommy?
No, I don't have any objection to that. I've actually been to see ballgames where my stepson's playing in, and, I mean, the way they regulate who comes in, what they wear, how they have their mask, and how they test the kids, I mean, as long as there's, you know, that process that they take, I think they can do it safely.
Yeah, okay. Thank you all. Okay, I'll move on to the discussion or adjustment of agenda. Does anybody, I don't have anything. Does anybody have anything on that? Okay, I'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda this morning? I know it's kind of lengthy, but does anybody have any questions about any item in the consent agenda?
No, just a comment. I noticed in the consent agenda on some of these budget amendments, United Way stepped up big on some of these, and I appreciate their contribution on some of these Meals on Wheels programs and other things that are entailed in this consent agenda. So, those contributions, voluntary contributions, they really help, and I just want to make that comment.
Thank you, Tommy. Is any other questions on the consent agenda? You're not all entertaining a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda, and our first item is to request approval of a wireless telecommute communication facility application pursuant to Haywood County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 115 of the Wireless Telecommunication Facilities. We have our operations director, Chris Boyd, here this morning. Welcome, Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I'm here to request consideration of the application for a special use permit from Velocitel and Bisat for the satellite internet wireless telecommunications facility located in the Balsam area.
Does anybody have any questions on this one? I have had no comments whatsoever about this. Mark Hatton, I guess.
Chris, have you had any comments?
I have not. I had one question prior to the hearing. I think it was apparently answered. The folks chose not to come to the hearing after our discussion.
Okay. I will say, I live, I have property that's within that jurisdiction, and I got a letter, you know, saying that I could come to a public hearing, so I know it was properly, I guess.
We do have the evidence of the properly notice to affected property owners.
Okay, if there's no questions, no questions? Do you need any comments, Chris?
No, sir.
Okay, I entertain a motion, will you approve item one of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris. Our second item of the regular agenda is to request approval of a resolution approving the county's community development block grant coronavirus application. We have our program administrator, David Francis, this morning. Welcome, Dave.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Before you, have two things that we need to accomplish, need adoption of the resolution for the CDBG CV grant and approval of the application as well, too. Just again, the overview, the objective of this grant application is to provide needed services to the Haywood County residents that are outside of our funding capability. In our current fiscal year, we plan to do this in two projects. The first project is a rehabilitation and upgrade of a former National Guard armory that is the county's possession and converting it to function as an emergency shelter, meeting the public facility's funding priority as part of this grant. The second project is to support Mountain Projects, a local nonprofit, in providing rent and utility supplements to landlords, utility companies, with the intent of keeping Haywood County residents in their homes and avoid possible eviction. This project aligns with the public service funding of this priority. I have the resolution that we can adopt or read into the minutes.
So, we need to approve a resolution and then another separate vote for an application?
Correct.
Okay. So, the first is the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have any questions for Dave on this? I guess, is that what I need to do now? Do we need to read the resolution?
We need to read, yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to read it. The sixth commissioner says we have to read it. Resolution for the County of Haywood's application for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CDBG-CV. Funding for the Haywood County Armory upgrades to serve as temporary emergency shelter and Mountain Projects' implementation of funding pool for rental assistance and utility disconnect prevention assistance project. Whereas, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners has previously indicated its desire to assist in community development efforts for the Armory facility upgrades to serve as a temporary emergency shelter due to state of emergency, natural disaster, or an unexpected event where citizens need temporary shelter, and to support Mountain Projects' implement a funding pool that will provide rental assistance, utility disconnection prevention assistance program within the county. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners has held two public hearings concerning the proposed application for Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CDBG-CV, funding to the benefit of the citizens of Haywood County during a state of emergency, natural disaster, or unexpected event where citizens need temporary shelter and to support Mountain Projects' implement a funding pool that will provide rental assistance and utility disconnection prevention assistance program. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners wishes the county pursue a formal application for Community Block Grant Coronavirus CDBG-CV, funding to benefit the citizens of Haywood County during a state of emergency, natural disaster, or unexpected event where citizens need temporary shelter, and to support Mountain Projects' implement a funding pool that will provide rental assistance and utility disconnection prevention assistance program that will invest monies in the amount of $75,000 or 10.08% cash match into the project as committed to an application. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners certifies that will meet all federal regulatory statutory requirements of the State of North Carolina Community Block and Development Grant. Now therefore, be resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners that the county is authorized to submit a formal application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce for approval of Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CDBG-CV to benefit the citizens of Haywood County during a state of emergency, natural disaster, or unexpected event where citizens need temporary shelter and to support Mountain Projects' implement a funding pool that provide rental assistance and utility disconnection prevention assistance program, adopted this second day of November 2020.
Okay, so can I have a motion that we approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. So, now, where is it? Is the application?
The application is attached there.
Okay, so it's just that long?
Yeah. And then, there's several things that you have to sign part of the application, Mr. Chairman. But it's basically just numbers going into different slots and spots there. So, our overall budget for CV grants were, for the Army, were $531,300. County proportion was $75,000, which brought the Army total to $606,300. The Mountain Projects' portion, $120,000 for assistance, $17,000 for administrative fees, brought that to $137,168. And then, we had grant administration's cost. Mr. Pless, you know, mentioned that, you know, make sure that we dotted i's and crossed our t's, so we acquired the services of grant administrator. Also, a part of that due to the environmental and lead concerns, due to the state requirements, we had to certify that, and that costs an additional $7,500 for that portion of it. So, that brought the total grant up to $705,968, the $75,000 match from the county for a total budget of $780,968.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's what our application will, dollar amount will be.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the application as stated by David. Is that okay to phrase it that way, Tracy? Okay. Okay, can I have that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that part of it? Dollar amounts and stuff? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, and then, the next order of business is appointments. And we have a request to approve the reappointment of Dawn Small to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an email from Larry Reeves, our Honesty Budsmann, asking for a three-year full-term appointment for Ms. Small to the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Board for Long-Term Care. She's an excellent advocate for the residents in Haywood County.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we approve Dawn Small to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. Okay, I had, I just noticed, Tracy, I had this in my folder. I guess it's an email from, I'm sorry, I guess constituent concerns, I'm running those all over the place. Is that okay for me to read that? And what's his name? Is it? Okay. It's Nico Paulus, I guess, Nico Paulus? Okay, he wrote in a letter, it's concerning the, I guess, the noise ordinance, maybe, or the noise. He says, anyway, hello, I'm a small business owner who relied on the live music entertainment industry to support my family and our community for over two decades. All of that part was put to an end in March 2020 when the coronavirus pandemic became a harsh reality for everyone. In that time, I've watched our live music community suffer in many ways. Not only are many thousands of service industry workers, including musicians and folks who are vital to the infrastructure of the music industry, suffering and barely hanging on, we have lost many beloved friends and vital performers due to the devastating mental anguish and turmoil of no longer having a means to well-being. The cases of suicides and overdoses in our community has personally hit me. I lost a friend and fellow musician just over a month ago. Great venues are closing down all across the region. People are out of work. The insecurity of not knowing what tomorrow will bring is almost crippling. Live music is part of the culture of western North Carolina, and there's a huge community of people who appreciate shows like the concert series at Haywood County Fairgrounds. Not only do these concerts provide stabilizing employment for many people, for many, many people during these uncertain times, these concerts also bring hope, joy, and a feeling of community to many people who have shared, who have been locked up in quarantine for 2020. As a community, we need these concerts, and I ask that this be allowed, shared aloud at the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting. So, I meant to do that during constituent concerns, and I just opened my folder and I saw that. So, we got that in, so. Does anybody have any other business before the board? At all? Okay, here and now, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. We're adjourned, and everyone be safe.